Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for today, September 26, 2023. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good evening and glad to see folks here. I'll just begin by noting for the record that Vice Mayor Nave is joining us via Zoom. And can you hear us, Ms. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I can get it.
Cool. And Councilman Farnham had a prior work commitment. He's not able to make it tonight. I don't have any comments. I'll open it up to other council comments.
I've got two things I'd like to briefly discuss. I want to thank the members of our fire department who are part of the Virginia Task Force for they deployed to Suffolk over the weekend for the weather. I'm not sure if they actually had to get out in it too much. I think the storm wasn't nearly as bad as we expected, but they were ready, willing, they were there, ready to serve. It's very fortunate that we have that that crew here in the city. They do a good job of helping around the region with various issues and around the country, honestly. So thank them for that. And then also, I want to want to thank our police department and our our city staff for their work in getting the speed cameras and the the equipment there in our school zones. Our our school kids are very important. They are our next generation. They are the future of this city. So that small hassle for some of us that might not always drive the speed limit is is worth it. So thank you all for doing that. Just a reminder to folks that they've been installed. There's 30 days of warning. So if you get a warning in the mail, the first 30 days, it should not be a ticket, but after that, tickets will be going out. So thank you all for doing that.
And one of the things that I've heard complaints about, they are very well marked. So you have no excuses if you get caught by one of those. They've done a very good job at making sure that everybody's aware that they're there. They're going to have a public information campaign to make sure that everybody knows exactly how all the details work. So this program has been very well thought out and we're really appreciative. I'm also appreciative that a lot of that some people are investing in our community with new businesses. Some of those are planned to open shortly. Some of them have just recently opened. And I'm grateful that they are confident in our community to the point of being able of being willing to invest and develop new businesses, in some cases, new concepts of businesses that we don't have around here. And I'm just glad to see the the new development, glad to see things that are interesting and different, and appreciative for people who feel confident in us.
All right. Thank you. City managers' comments.
Yeah, Council, I have just a few comments. This past Friday, I attended a ribbon cutting at Sugar Hall or Sugar Hollow Park. There was a new mountain biking trail that was open called the Flying Sporl. It's a one mile beginner style trail. So I would encourage people to go out and check that new trail out at Sugar Hollow Park. Also want to thank the Public Works Department, especially the sign shop for installing the letter on the DS lettering on the DSS building for Reverend W. A. Johnson, where we renamed that building in his honor. And also, thanks to Public Works for their hard work on the new sidewalks that have gone in along Commonwealth Avenue. Early voting started Friday, September 22. And if you're a Bristol, Virginia resident, you have several options to cash your ballot here in the city. And one is a drive through option. So encourage citizens to go ahead and start voting early if they choose to do so. Oktoberfest is this Saturday in Cumberland Square Park. So if you have something, you don't have anything to do on Saturday, come down to Cumberland Square Park for Oktoberfest. And then finally, the new Mendota Trail is completely open all the way from Bristol to Mendota. And come out and take a ride or a walk on the Mendota Trail.
Very good. Thank you. Next is adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion and a second.
I move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Into the regular agenda, item one, presentation from the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police Staff Report.
Counsel, tonight, Chief John Clare from Marion will be presenting Police Chief John Austin a certification as his chief executive officer for the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police. I want to take this time to note that I would not have known about this had it not been for Chief Clare calling and telling us that he was going to present John Austin this award. It just goes to show the type of person and leader that John is. He doesn't want recognition for what he does. He just does his job and he does it well. But without Chief Clare calling us, I would not have known about this, and neither would City Council. So thank you, Chief Clare, for calling and letting us know. And then to Chief Austin, thank you for all that you do here in the city. It's appreciated, and we couldn't do it without you. Your leadership is very invaluable, and I appreciate it every day.
All right. If you want to come on up and... Thank you.
Well, City Manager Eads already gave me a pretty full introduction, but aside from being the Chief of Police of Marion, I'm also one of the Vice Presidents of the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police, and I serve on our certification committee. Last year, we launched a certification program to recognize the work and training and professionalism of chief executives and command executives across Virginia. And John applied for that, and he was awarded his certification at our annual conference in September. And if I if I could, I'd like to read what it says. It says, "The Executive Board of the Virginia Chiefs of Police and Foundation has conferred upon Chief John Stephen Austin the distinction of Certified Law Enforcement Chief Executive for fulfilling prescribed standards, upholding the VACP standards of conduct, and committing to ongoing professional development and law enforcement administration." And John, on behalf of our past President Colonel Jeffrey Katz from Chesterfield County, and our current President Craig Branch from Jermaine Community College, I'd like to present you with that.
Thank you very much, Chief Clare. And I saw Chief Austin walking away from the mic, so I don't know if he wants to talk or not. But, you know, I'll just I'll just say, you know, on behalf of the city, we appreciate everything that you do. We are very fortunate that we have a really good police chief. And I'm glad that you get recognized, you know, outside of the city for the for the good work you do and and the top level. We have we have a police department second to none. And and you're the head of that, and we really genuinely appreciate you.
I appreciate that, that I really have to be appreciative of you guys.
Well, thank you. All right. Item two, proclamation to commemorate WJHL on 70 years of broadcasting. Staff report.
Counsel, this year, WJHL is celebrating their 70th anniversary to commemorate the milestone each month this each month this year, they are taking their newscast on the road to a community that they serve. They will be broadcasting from two locations in Bristol, Virginia on Wednesday, September 27. During their broadcast, it will be highlighting things that make Bristol, Virginia a great place to live and visit.
All right. Reading the proclamation. Do you want to do that? Or you want me to do that?
It's up to you.
I'll read it. All right. A proclamation to commemorate WJHL on 70 years of broadcasting. Whereas WJHL is a respected and trusted source for local news, weather, and sports coverage in Bristol, Virginia, and the surrounding region. And this year, WJHL is celebrating its 70th anniversary. And whereas WJHL was founded by Haynes Lancaster Senior and Haynes Lancaster Junior and Jay Birdwell, and launched its inaugural broadcast on October 26, 1953. And whereas WJHL was the second television station to sign on in East Tennessee, but the first station to broadcast in the tri-cities market. And whereas, over the years, changes have occurred in the ownership of the station and the location of the transmission towers, but the station's commitment to keeping its viewers informed has never wavered. And whereas, in addition to the main studio in downtown Johnson City, WJHL TV also operates news bureaus in Kingsport, Bristol, and Greenville, employing approximately 82 people. And whereas WJHL serves Washington Sullivan, Carter Green, Unicoy, Johnson, and Hawkins County in Tennessee, Washington Smith, Scott, Russell, McCannon, Dickinson, Wise, and Lee Counties in Virginia, and Leslie and Letcher Counties in Kentucky, thus reaching over 300,000 total households in its designated market area. And whereas, WJHL provides a combined eight and a half hours of local news, weather, and sports every Monday through Friday on WJHL and WJHL Channel 11.2. In addition to providing coverage of special events and 24-hour news on its website, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Bristol, Virginia, does hereby recognize WJHL TV for their 70 years of broadcasting to southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, and western Kentucky, adopted this 26th day of September, 2023. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Pollard, second for Mr. Holmes. Council discussion.
I'll my wife is going to kill me for this. I'm going to jump in and make just a little little crack at WJHL. Last year during the campaign, I was the the youngest candidate running, although the mayor is only, I think, a year older than I am. And I think Councilman Farnham is in the same boat there. But the only person's age in WJHL reports was mine. So I'm very thankful that we get to call out their age this year when they called out mine last year. But I'm happy to support this.
I am glad to see the promotion of local news outlets. I believe that it's very important for the people to stay informed as to what's going on. I think that openness and transparency is very important. And it doesn't do a whole lot of good for us to be open and transparent if nobody knows about it. And that's what the the local news media is there for, to make sure that everybody knows about what's going on and all the details about it. And I am very appreciative. Thank you.
You know, first, I'll say to Councilman Holmes that, yeah, they got me in 2018, so join the club. You know, we appreciate the the work that WJHL does, reporting, you know, local news stories throughout our region. And they sometimes they ask very tough questions, but they're trying to get to the bottom of of a story, and they're trying to cover it thoroughly and and clearly. And, you know, in a in a broader sense, you know, you think of CBS as a very respected news organization. I, you know, I was 11 or 12 years old. I remember Dan Rather was what we watched in my house. So WJHL has has had a place in in my home for a very long time and in the homes of a lot of people. So we appreciate the the coverage that you all you all offer. And we hope you'll do it for many more years. Before we jump to calling the roll, I know that Kelly Grossfield with WJHL is here. If you want to say something, you're totally invited to.
Well, thank you guys so much for allowing us to broadcast in Bristol, Virginia. We're excited. We know that you guys are all avid JHL watchers, don't even care about those guys right down the street, right, Neil?
I have no comment.
We will be adding your age to all of our web stories if that makes you feel better.
That makes me feel much worse, actually.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. If you want to hang around, I'm going to give you this proclamation in just a moment. All right. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. And if you'll come down front here. All right. Item three is approval to hire a landfill director. Staff report.
Counsel, as you know, and as the rest of the public in the tri-cities area knows, we've had an issue with our landfill now since late 2020, early 2021. And in late 2021, we had a landfill director for a short period of time. And we did not, we chose not to fill that position in the spring of 2022. And we converted the position over to a project manager at the landfill. And the project manager is doing a great job. But as we continue to move through these projects that we have at the landfill, and as we continue to move over the next decade through some of these projects at the landfill, I think it's important that we have a landfill director at our landfill overseeing the projects, overseeing our engineers, and making sure things are going on track and staying within budget. At this time, I'd ask for approval to add an additional full-time employee as a landfill director.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
So move.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Pollard, second for Mr. Holmes. Council discussion.
That's a very important position. And it's been difficult to get professional people to come onto city staff and to stay for whatever reason, partly because of the political nature of our landfill. I am glad to see that we are going to step up our efforts to fill that position. There's a lot of really important things going on at the landfill, and we need to make sure that the city's best interests and the best interests of the residents are reflected in what's going on there.
We've made a lot of progress on the landfill. There's still a lot of work to do, and we can't let up. So I'm I'm very excited that we're we're moving forward with this so we can devote even more attention to this.
I think this is very good. You know, this this position will not only help us with direct management of what's going on at the landfill, it will help hopefully take a little bit of weight off of the Public Works Director's shoulders and allow him to focus on the other aspects of public works. This will this will make sure that we are dotting all of our i's and crossing all of our t's. And I'm excited for this job posting to go up and for us to find a good qualified professional landfill director to fill it.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Item four, appointment of council member to Explore Bristol Board. Staff report.
Counsel, on June 13, 2023, the City Council approved a resolution to designate Explore Bristol as the city's new destination marketing organization. And with this designation, the council will need to appoint a member of the council to serve on their board of directors.
All right. So we're going to be looking for a motion and a second to nominate one council member to the board. So I'll I'll open it up for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Jake Holmes to be our representation, our appointment to the Explore Bristol Board.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from the Vice Mayor to nominate Mr. Holmes and a second for Mr. Pollard. Council discussion.
I'm looking forward to seeing what Explore Bristol does for the city. I'm very excited to to see what they've got going on.
I agree. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I was just going to say, you know, Councilman Holmes was out for representation on the Discover Bristol Board. So I thought it would be good to have him move over and represent us on the Explore Bristol Board.
Thank you. I agree with what the what the Vice Mayor and Mr. Pollard have said. You know, Councilman Holmes and I both serve on the Discover Bristol Board. And as Discover Bristol will be continuing in marketing efforts for the city, we felt it was important that one of us stay on that board and one of us go to the Explore Bristol Board. And I can't think of a better person to go to Explore Bristol Board than Jake. I think he'll do a very good job, and he's a very good advocate for for tourism and for marketing the city. And I guess, you know, technically, since we've nominated, we need to ask if he'll do it.
Well, thank you all for the kind words and the advocacy for this. I happy to do it, happy to represent the city there. Looking forward to, as Mr. Pollard said, seeing what they can do for the city. Looking forward to that. Tourism is such a a big draw to our our city, our region, with the Mendota Trail, with the new trails at Sugar Hollow. We have so much to offer here. Let's market it. Let's let's really do that work. I do have a question for Mr. Eads real quick. I don't have to abstain on voting for myself, do I?
You do not.
Okay, just making sure.
What if you lose by one vote, and you feel so bad?
Bigger problems there.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Item five is a supplemental appropriation of $1,232,500. Staff report from the CFO.
Members of council, this item is a supplemental appropriation of $1,232,500. The local-funded Capital Projects Fund, Fire Department, appropriate additional cash balance in the fund for Fire Department personal protective equipment, $70,000. Maintenance of municipal buildings, appropriate additional cash balance in the fund for maintenance of facilities and buildings, $100,000. The COVID-19 Federal Funds Fund for solid waste disposal and collections, appropriate remaining cash balance in the fund for the expenditure of approved projects in fiscal year 2024, $1 million. Appropriate interest to be earned on fund cash deposits, $55,000. Tourism promotion, appropriate federal funds returned by Discover Bristol to be expended on tourism promotion, $7,500. Again, making the total supplemental appropriation, $1,232,500. And staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this appropriation.
I'll move this the supplemental appropriation of $1,232, excuse me, $1,232,500.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Council discussion.
A lot of this is going to finalize some things of the landfill that we've been working on for some time. I am glad to see that we are making solid, concrete progress on getting the issues of the landfill finally resolved. I have heard a lot of comments from residents that they don't that some people still notice problems, but not nearly what it used to be. Even those who are still noticing problems aren't noticing it as often or strongly. And hopefully, even what is still getting out there will soon be resolved. And this is one of the final steps in getting that taken care of.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. Next item is budget transfer from the general fund. Staff report from the CFO.
Members of council, this item is a budget transfer within the general fund. This is to transfer budgeted funds from Parks and Recreation Operations to the Police Department to cover increase for contract labor. The amount of this transfer is $2,000, and staff recommends that council approve the transfer of fiscal year 24 budgeted items within the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Pollard, second for Mr. Holmes. Council discussion.
It's my understanding that this is contract labor is basically for the same purpose, is just going to be used in a different department. So it's it's since it's in different departments, it couldn't be done administratively. It required our approval. So I have no problem with this whatsoever. It's a basically a technicality. And it's only $2,000 of that, which the staff would normally be able to approve themselves.
I agree. It's a it's a very small amount, but it will go go a long way to helping increase the hourly rate for our contract labor. And hopefully, that will make them happier, make things a little bit easier for them, and also give us give us even better product with better staffing. So I appreciate it.
I might want to make one comment so that I'm not misunderstood. I appreciate the checks and balances that we have where things that are transferred between departments have to come to the City Council for approval. That way, we know what's going on. We we know that we have really good staff here. So we don't have to worry too much about them doing things that may be inappropriate. But I also appreciate the checks and balances and the, well, openness and transparency, as I said earlier. So even though it is a small amount, I appreciate the oversight in getting it done.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Into our next section, first reading ordinances, first one. An ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia, located on Spyglass Court. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, on August 1, 2023, the city received an unsolicited offer to purchase two city-owned parcels of land located on Spyglass Court in the Clear Creek Golf Community. Map parcel numbers 121-C-1-E3 and number 121-C-1-E9. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia and the City Code of Bristol, Virginia, a notice of the offer and notice of this public hearing was published in the Bristol Herald-Hewer on August 8, 2023, and published online from August 8 through August 17. The offers were to be directed to myself at my email address or to send it to City Hall, or they could call me at 276-645-7333 prior to August 22 at 3:00 p.m. Any offer received after that date and time was not considered. We did receive two offers for, well, we received one offer for two lots and one offer for one lot. And I'm asking permission to go ahead and negotiate and sell two lots.
All right. Thank you very much. We're looking for a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance, which I'll remind you can be in full or by caption only.
I move the first reading of the ordinance in caption only.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Council discussion.
I'm glad to see that some people are some more people are looking to develop some likely very valuable higher-end properties in the city. That doesn't just mean that somebody's willing to buy these properties. That means that they are willing to invest and invest rather heavily in in the city. And I'm I'm very glad to see that. That means that the city's doing something right. Not necessarily us, but the city is doing something right.
I agree. I think that it it's very exciting anytime you have someone who wants to come in and and build some new houses. Obviously, Clear Creek is a very nice neighborhood, so I think there'll be very nice houses. And I'm excited to see what the finished product is.
Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Counsel, I got ahead of myself. An ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia, located on Spyglass Court, map parcel numbers 121-C-1-E3 and parcel number 121-C-1-E9.
All righty. Thank you. Next item, an ordinance to amend section 62-10 of chapter 62 to the City Code pertaining to loitering in public spaces in public places or streets. No one signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, the purpose of this ordinance amendment is to include a more detailed description of loitering in public places or streets and to be put in. It's pursuant to Virginia Code section 15.2-926.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance, which can be in full or by caption only.
I move the first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Council discussion.
Well, we have heard from various residents, particularly some of our downtown business residents and and their guests, that particularly related to vagrants from out of town, that sometimes things downtown, particularly later in the evenings, can be dangerous. And this will give us a little bit of additional enforcement ability concerning those types of things. of things when people are, and it'll also impact panhandling, some other things that create safety issues. We have, we don't have so much problem with our local peaceful homeless individuals. We want to do what we can to help them. But there are those that make certain situations and certain locations less safe than they should be, and this will give our police department a few more tools in their bag to help keep everybody safe.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to amend Section 62-10 of Chapter 62 to the City Code pertaining to loitering in public places or streets.
All right, thank you. Next item. An ordinance to add Section 62-13 to Chapter 62. Article 1 of the City Code pertaining to public urination, defecation, exposure of genitals. No one signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, staff is asking that council add an ordinance 62-13. It's in regards to public urination, defecation, and exposure of genitals, and it would state that it shall be unlawful for any person to urinate or defecate or expose his or her genitals for the purpose of urinating or defecating in or on any sidewalk street or in any public place or in the view of public unless such urination, defecation, or exposure be in a bathroom, restroom, or other facility specifically designated for such purpose. Any person who violates this section shall be guilty of a Class 1 misdemeanor.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance, which can be in full or by caption only.
So moved. Oh, sorry. Let's do this by caption only.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Pollard, second for Mr. Holmes. Counsel discussion.
I had thought that there was state code relating to this already, and this would just give our local police department, like I said earlier, a few more tools for enforcement. Turns out that the state code that I thought applied only applies to public parks. There currently is apparently no code relating to a person using the bathroom outside of the bathroom, which was surprising to me. There is code regarding public indecency, but not something that is a health risk. I mean, we're not just talking about indecent exposure, we're talking about something that's very much unsanitary, and it creates a public danger. And this will help encourage people to do what they should be doing already. We have to, for those who are unhoused, and I'm giving some people the benefit of doubt that they don't have other alternatives. If somebody has other alternatives, they need to make use of them. But we have two homeless shelters for the evenings. We have three-day centers for the daytimes. There are some businesses that make their facilities available, such as particularly the library. They have alternatives. They don't need to be doing that.
I agree. I mean, you know, it's a public health concern. It's a concern if you're taking your kids to the park and you see somebody with their pants down. So, you know, it makes sense that we would not want to allow that. There are a lot of options that people have, and, you know, we're very, I'll speak for myself, you know, I'm very much, you know, on the side of trying to find a way to help people who are unhoused. But we also have a top priority of, you know, protecting the safety of people downtown for sanitary reasons and for keeping it family-friendly. So I think this is common sense.
Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to add Section 62-13 to Chapter 62, Article 1 of the City Code pertaining to public urination, defecation, exposure of genitals.
All right, thank you. Next section is second reading of ordinances. First one is an ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia, located on Clear Creek Road. No one signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, on August 14th, 2023, the city received an unsolicited offer to purchase city-owned parcel of land located on Clear Creek Road near Wallace Middle School. And I know we need some clarification in the ordinance to just notice an issue that probably needs to be clarified, but Wallace Middle School is in Washington County, but the property itself is in the City of Bristol, Virginia, and it's map parcel number 141-A-45. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia and the City Code of Bristol, Virginia, a notice of the offer and notice of this public hearing was published in the Bristol Herald-Courier on August 22nd, 2023, and August 28th, 2023. Counsel, there was two locations in the ordinance that we need to change. The first is in the second whereas paragraph. It says property located near Wallace Middle School in Washington County, Virginia. I just want to clarify that the property is in Bristol, Virginia. I think you're talking about Wallace Middle School being in Washington County, Virginia. So just want to clarify that, and we can do that just by an amendment when you all make the motion, that clarify that the property is in Bristol, Virginia. And also in paragraph 2 of the wherefore clause hereby ordains, paragraph 2.
All right, thank you very much. So we're looking for a motion and a second for second reading, which can be in full or by caption only, and I'd request that we note the changes in this motion that the city manager recommended.
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only with the one change in paragraph 2, where we clearly state that the property is in the city.
All right.
I'll need to abstain, as I'll explain momentarily.
Which means I can't do the second?
Okay. So we've got a motion for Mr. Holmes, and we're looking for a second.
Counsel, based on the fact that we do not have a, we have to have a four-fifth vote on this, we probably need to postpone this since Mr. Pollard will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. So before we get any second, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. Do you want to make a different motion?
I, do we need to state as?
Just postpone it to the next council meeting.
Okay. I move that we postpone this agenda to the next council meeting.
All right. And?
I can second that one.
You can second that, okay. So we have a motion for Mr. Holmes and a second for Mr. Pollard to postpone this to our next council meeting, which will be the second Tuesday in October. Please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Next item. Second reading of an ordinance to amend Section 50-492, frequency of cutting vacant lots. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, staff has submitted an amendment to Section 50-492 of the City Code. This section of code currently states it shall be the duty of the owner and occupant to cut and remove all grass weeds and other overgrown vegetation as often as necessary, so as to comply with this division. Vacant lots adjacent to improved property shall be kept within, kept cut within 100 feet of such improved property, and shall be cut at least three times per year as required by the growing season, April through September. The proposed amendment to the code is attached, and this requires owners to cut the property or cut the property that are not zoned for residential use shall be cut no less than six times per year and not less than one time per month during the times of April through September.
All righty, thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second for second reading, which can be in full or by caption only.
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Counsel discussion.
We've got some properties that aren't being maintained properly, and that's basically what it all comes down to. In some cases, there are details where they can get around having to cut it. In some cases, there are details where they can get around cutting it as often. And in some cases, where they're using those details to getting around having to cut as often, they're just not doing it at all. If anybody complains that this is too rigorous, it's another one of those cases where somebody causing problems causes problems for everybody. But I don't think that this is too rigorous. I think that it's a good balance. The code also says that grass only has to be kept under 12 inches, so if the grass isn't over 12 inches come the next month, you still don't have to cut it because it qualifies anyway. But if it is taller grass, which we have a lot of in the city, then it has to be cut at least monthly during the growing season. I think that's entirely reasonable.
Yeah, I think that one thing that is important, and, you know, we hear it individually as elected officials throughout the summer, is what's going on with this lot on, name a street, you know? Because, you know, there are a lot of overgrown lots, and I hope that this gives us another tool in our toolbox to be able to make the city look a little bit better when you're driving through. So I can think of a few that I won't call out, a few lots that hopefully this will help, and it'll improve those neighborhoods, so, or improve those areas of town. So looking forward to this going into effect. So we have a motion and a second for second reading by caption only, so please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 23-23, an ordinance to amend Section 50-492 of Article 5, Division 2 of Chapter 50 to the City Code pertaining to maintenance of premises, frequency of cutting vacant lots.
All right, thank you. Now we're looking for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance.
I move adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Next section of the agenda is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. We have two people who are signed up. If you've never spoken before, come up to the microphone, state your name and where you're from. You have three minutes. When the green light comes on, that's when your time starts. Yellow light comes on, that means you've got 30 seconds. Red light comes on, that means your time is up, so please wrap it up. And we have two people, so I'll just go in alphabetical order. Sam Davis?
My name's Samuel Davis. I come here to talk about solar panels. I started a project in November of 2020, I think it was, to install solar panels for charging an electric vehicle and running the lights in my house. It was unrealistic to try to run everything in the house, like the heat pump and the stove and refrigerator, but I figured if I could run just the lights and a car charger, that would be enough. And the zoning laws in 2020, when I first started the projects, I could do it, but it seems like now that the project is nearing completion and I need to get it inspected, it seems like the zoning laws have changed, and now I'm having difficulties getting it to pass building codes. So that was all I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. We don't have our zoning folks here tonight, but after the meeting, if you'll speak with the city manager, he'll take your information, and we'll try and follow up with you and see if we can't figure it out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who's signed up is Stephen Gobble.
Stephen Gobble Jr., 2761 Everett Street, Bristol, Virginia. Thank you for this time to speak to you, for I've been silent for far too long. I've always believed that not to speak is to speak because you believe speak is acceptance by not speaking out. I just want to clear up some misconceptions that have been continuously told. These are the misconceptions that Christians are the only people that are against unaliving children. In fact, worldwide is one of the biggest forms of child abuse. Of course, people here all know that many Christians, no matter which denomination, are against abortion. However, looking at other religions, Buddhists believe that life should not be destroyed by regard causing death deliberately or by negligence is morally wrong. Some Hindu scriptures assert that abortion is a worse sin than killing your own parents, while other texts compare abortion to killing priests. Sikhs believe that the fetus is alive immediately at conception. Abortion is not permitted unless there's a serious threat to the mother's life. Furthermore, according to Muslim authorities, abortion is an act of interfering with the role of Allah. Although the Hanafi scholars teach that it is unwanted but not prohibited before 120 days, or approximately 17 weeks, and the Ashafi school teaches that in their terminology, a pregnancy is permitted of two forty days. Code of Virginia has its own set of rules as well. Firstly, Section 18.2-73 and Section 18.2-74, which talks that when the abortion is lawful during and after the second trimester, says that it can only be performed in a hospital licensed by the Department of Health or operated by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Could not find glossary of definitions in the Code of Virginia for this section, so the only definitions we can go by is WebMD and PharmaEducation.com. And as we've been told several times before, the abortion clinic in Bristol, Virginia can only be labeled as a specialized clinic. And upon checking the records, I could not find the abortion clinic in Bristol, Virginia as being part of the State Department of Health nor the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, which also leads me to question if abortions are being reported as required in Section 32.1-264 of the Code of Virginia. And last but not least, Section 18.2-76.1 also defines the criminal charges for advertising and promoting abortion, as can be found on the abortion clinic's website. So although you may be afraid to talk about this issue publicly because there's threats of lawsuits, how long will it be before someone or a group of people bring a lawsuit against the city on behalf of all the children that were possibly, possibly wrongfully killed because of possible negligence and oversight of the code? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Pollard. Please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
There being no further business, we stand adjourned.